Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Council Member Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us take a moment to talk about tomorrow. Tomorrow, of course, is the commemoration of 9/11 and the attacks on our country. I think it's one of those seminal moments in our history where everyone knows where they were when that happened. And for me, it was in the mayor's office as deputy chief of staff, and I can recall the shock we felt, as everyone did, in watching that happen live, but then immediately the scrambling to try and make sure that everyone here locally was safe. And usually when we do that, that largely falls upon our first responders, police officers and firefighters here at the local level. And we're blessed that we have been safe since that day, largely due to them. So I want to take this moment to recognize them. We have many of them here today with us, and urge folks to think about them tomorrow when you're commemorating this event, whether you're at the first responders' lunch or attending a fire station tomorrow at 9:11 in the morning. Please give them your gratitude, thank them for what they do, and for keeping us and our families safe. Thanks.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask that you please turn off or silence your phones at this time. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve setting the 2020 property tax request as specified on the agenda.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for West Center Village, replat two, located northeast of 203rd and Vinton Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, already driven 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant just here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this preliminary plat.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for R&amp;L Carriers addition, located northeast of 117th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, City Council. Good afternoon, City Council, and ladies and gentlemen of the community. My name is John Mengfrecker with Earhart Griffin Civil Engineering, 3552 Farnham Street. I am introducing R&amp;L Carriers. I'm going to talk a little bit about the requirements that we have made, and then Stan Richards from Wilmington, Ohio will talk about the project and what it brings to the community. So in the planning board, we met everything that was required. We stepped through each and one of every item from the recommendation letter. We have the approval of Douglas County Emergency Management, noxious weed control, Douglas County Health Department. We've worked closely with Douglas County Engineer on the roadways improvements to 117th and State Street. Worked closely with the City of Omaha on State Street and 114th Street. We have worked with the landowners to the north, excuse me, to the south, and the SID, Deer Creek Highlands, for sanitary sewer connection. We have met privately with the neighbors to the east of 114th Street. There is a future roadway in our preliminary plat, and should there be a final plat, it would trigger the development of that roadway, and they understand how that works. We have done a traffic study and incorporated the requirements of that traffic study to create visibility, turn lanes, diesel lanes, wider street around State Street, tapers where they connect to 117th and to State Street. We are extending a sanitary sewer to the south, which benefits the open property to the south and the SID south of that. We have met publicly with the neighborhood on August 7th, where many people came, and Stan Richards talked about the company, R&amp;L Carriers, and the project. We have reached out to City Council, and Stan is going to talk, Stan Richards is going to talk about the operational hours of the trucking facility as it pertains to activity on State Street, as well talk about, you know, what R&amp;L brings to the community in terms of revenue, tax income, and the number of jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Richards.
Good afternoon. Stan Richards, 600 Gillum Road, Wilmington, Ohio. I'm with R&amp;L Carriers. I'm the Director of Construction. R&amp;L Carriers has been in the area since 2006. We're currently in La Vista on Gertrude Street. We have 122 facilities nationally across the United States. We have just shy of 13,000 employees that we have with our company. We're an LTL company that is somewhat different than some of the other logistic companies across the land. LTL stands for less than loaded. What that means is we don't have to have a full truckload to stop by and pick up the freight. So if there's a mom and pop shop in the area that is just trying to make a go of it out of their garage, we'll stop by and pick up just that one pallet of freight. We don't pick up or deliver packages such as UPS or FedEx, the smaller packages. Everything is confined to a pallet or at least that size. Currently, we have right at 38 employees in the La Vista area. Our goal and our desire is to bring all those employees to this new location. We certainly want to retain as many as possible. We don't know the exact number that will be able to make the move, but it's our intentions to retain all of the employees. With the growth that we expect to have, we're hoping to have somewhere between 20 and 25% growth in the next three to five years. We look forward to not only be a good company in the Omaha area, but a good neighbor to the residents. The requirement, I believe, was to go about 300 foot, or 300 feet away from the property to meet with neighbors. We went over a mile away just so that we could encompass and let all the neighbors in that area know what was going on. Very good meeting, good interaction, but that's a little bit about operation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Oh, yeah. I was just wondering if, just for the public, and I appreciate the fact that, and I don't know, Stan, if you want to talk to this, or if anybody has any drawings, just to show people that, you know, some of the concerns were just how much truck traffic is going to be in and around the neighborhood? Where's the truck traffic going to be directed to? And I want to thank you. I've been presented with this information, and I'm comfortable, but I want to make sure that the public has that information.
Just to speak about the operation, as John, it's both.
You have to say your name again.
I'm sorry. Stan Richards.
Thank you.
Do I need to give the address again?
No, we have that.
Okay. Just to speak about the traffic study, there is a layout of the facility, and is it just a point here?
Yes.
This would be 117th Street. This would be the front of the facility right here, where we call the office, and this would be the dock, and this would be the shop over here. There would be a maintenance shop that would take care of safety issues, light bulbs, tires, preventative maintenance. And as far as the impact to the streets in the area, our operation, the truck drivers will come in somewhere around 8:00 AM in the morning. They will get their routes, they will get their assigned trucks and trailers, they will go fuel up, there would be some last minute preparation and safety checks. So that would put them on the road anywhere from 8:45 to 10:30, depending on what all is entailed for that specific route. They will all leave, hopefully everybody's gone by 11 o'clock is our desire. So that puts us out away from rush hour traffic in that area, which is a concern with everybody. From 11 to about 4:30 or 5, the dock is quiet, the lights go off because there's no activity, and then the trucks start coming back in. As they come back in, one by one, we offload them, we switch the freight around if it goes to Dallas, Chicago, wherever. And then, so from 4:30, from 4:30 to 6 is when the trucks would come back in one by one. It's not like they all come back in at the same time.
And then what streets will you be using for ingress and egress and impact to the neighborhood, especially that Deer Creek area?
We would go down 117th to State Street, and 99% of our truck traffic is going to go out State Street to 133 and then out to 680. The only reason we would go the opposite way on State Street is if there was a specific delivery in that area for that day.
So it'd be something individual. You're not going to have a whole string of trucks that are going to be going past that neighborhood and heading west. You're going to go access the highways.
There should not be any trucks except for the deliveries that.
I mean, there's one or two, yeah, on occasion.
Yep, on occasion. Yep.
Okay. And I think that's kind of the main concern, is the truck traffic going back in, maybe potentially into the neighborhoods, or going in front of the neighborhoods and creating, creating issues, not only with traffic, but noise and other things like that, but your traffic, really because of where you're situated, should not have any impact on the neighborhood whatsoever.
None.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to get at. I know I've seen a number of drawings.
Sure.
I'd met with your attorney, who gave me a very detailed picture of what was going on, and I was comfortable with it, but I did receive at least one email from somebody that wasn't, wasn't real happy, but I, it sounds like you had the neighborhood meeting. How many people showed up?
24.
24. And I guess I don't see anybody here today, and I received one email, and it was mainly in regards, or with concerns to the impact on the neighborhood. So with that, I would, I think I would support this. Obviously, our zoning supports this, as using this for commercial as part of the master plan, and this is kind of out in an area where, as long as the trucks aren't going the opposite direction, it shouldn't have any impact on the neighbors. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, is there a motion? Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for South Hill addition with a waiver of section 5384A lot depth, located at 1301 South 12th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Tom McClay, 3814 Farnham Street, Suite 201, here on behalf of the development team. This is a replat of six parcels. We actually were in front of this council a number of months ago, four or five, I believe, in regards to tax increment financing. Hopefully, you might recall, or if not, this is for six row homes that we are planning on doing as a follow-on to our South Hill Row House project, where if we did 36 there, this is a half block away. We would do six more. This would be a for-sale product, which we like to be able to do for neighborhoods to bring more homeownership into the urban core. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might all have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Items 10 to 14 can be considered together for Vistancia, located northwest of 204th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R5 District. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District, identity. Item 12, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 3 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items 10 through 14 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant, about Conning Land Development. With me today is Jeff Elliott, project engineer. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
10 through 14 are approved, seven to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for property located at 10810 Harney Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone this property from GO District to CC District. Item 16, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI 3 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items 15 and 16 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, thank you. Chris Horstman. I'm looking to purchase this property and rezone it to this, so I was just here to answer any question, any questions you guys may have for me.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
15 and 16 are approved, seven to zero. Item 17 and 18 can be considered together for property located at 9006 Ohio Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District to CC District. Item 18, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing on items 17 and 18 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
17 and 18 are approved, seven to zero. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1901 Howard Street, from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Baraona with Earhart Griffin and Associates, 3552 Farnham Street, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for 1111, located at 6061 Maple Street. Is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Robert Rutter, 5623 Whitmore.
Dave Utterback, 6627 Worth Street.
Thank you. Are you aware that if this were to be approved, it would be contingent upon obtaining all the proper permits?
Yes.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is in Benson, right along Maple Street.
Yep.
And a renovation of a building that I think is already underway, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what you're going to do there? I think it's a new wine bar.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a real lack in the Benson area of kind of more adult places to hang out. You know, there's a lot of kind of loud bars, and this would be something a little more quiet. The hours would be a little more limited. We'd close at 11 o'clock. Wine retail, and then just a small wine bar, just a nice, kind of quiet place to enjoy a glass of wine.
On an off sale, right?
Yes.
And any food, anything like that?
Maybe something really small, like charcuterie, but we don't really plan on doing much food.
Okay. Well, I know you guys know what you do, what you're doing. You own a couple other Benson businesses too that have been there for a long time, so we appreciate your reinvestment in the community.
Yep.
Motion approved.
Subject to permits?
Yes.
Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thanks.
Item 21, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for 402 E-plus drink, located at 17305 Davenport Street, space Q-115.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Villa Aletta, located at 4714 North 120th Street. Is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Tony Constantino, 1014 North 63rd Street, here to answer any questions.
Dana Constantino, 1014 North 63rd Street, to answer any questions.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are you aware that if it's approved, it'd be contingent upon obtaining all the proper permits?
Yes.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Subject to permits? Same with the second? Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 23 and 24 can be considered together. Applications to consider a Class IE liquor license for bar, interrail, food hall, located at 1911 South 67th Street.
The public hearing on items 23 and 24 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neill, O'Neill Heinrich Law Firm in Lincoln, Nebraska, here on behalf of the applicant, and I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
23 and 24 are approved, seven to zero. Item 25, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for 13th Street Liquor, located at 1903 South 13th Street.
Public hearing on item 25 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
25 is approved, seven to zero. Item 26, a resolution to require Club Karma, located at 1419-1421 Farnham Street, to submit a formal application before its Class C retail liquor license is renewed for the 2019-2020 licensing year.
Before I call item 26, I would say because of the unique nature, you may be affiliated with or wish to testify on behalf of the long-form application or in opposition to the long-form application. So when I call proponents, that'll be individuals requesting that the liquor commission have this establishment, do the long-form application. Opponents would be those who do not want that to happen. So the public hearing on item 26 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. We are here today after seven citizens filed protests against the automatic renewal of the liquor license held by Club Karma. These protests have been attached to the resolution before you, and generally allege the licensee operates Club Karma in a manner which permits the serving of alcoholic beverages to overly intoxicated persons, potential serving of alcohol to minors, patrons who remove open containers from the licensed premises, patrons who litter on and around the licensed premises by discarding cans, bottles, cigarette butts, condoms, drug paraphernalia, and general litter and other refuse, excessive noise that is sufficient to shake the windows and floors of neighboring residential properties, and which permits aggressive and drunken crowds to engage in physical altercations and harassment of neighboring residents and other pedestrians. These citizen protests require the council to have the hearing that we are having today to determine whether there is sufficient evidence to investigate whether the licensee no longer meets the license qualifications that existed at the time that the license was issued. The Nebraska Supreme Court has held that a long-form application can be required if there is a showing that the licensee does not meet one of the renewal criteria. This requires the council to consider, one, whether something material has changed about the licensee or the location from when the license was last issued, and, two, whether the licensee no longer meets the qualifications to have a license. Nebraska revised statute 53-132 states that a license may be issued to an applicant who is, one, fit, willing, and able to properly provide the services at the licensed premises; two, is able to conform to all the provisions and requirements of the rules and regulations adopted pursuant to the Nebraska Liquor Control Act; three, can demonstrate that they have the type of management and control over the licensed premises that will be sufficient to ensure that the business can conform to the applicable rules and regulations; and, four, that the issuance of the license is or will be required by the present or future public convenience and necessity. Paul Hyde, the licensee, was before this council earlier this year on January 8, 2019. At the public hearing for the license for Club Karma, he stated, quote, "We are definitely not the type of dance club. We are doing, we are actually doing a normal venue, a straight venue, local venue. My son is a local music guy. We don't have any plans for anything large. We are just a 300-seat venue. We are just going to bring in local acts. We are not looking to do anything huge." Councilmember Jerrym, okay. So it's a traditional entertainment venue with traditional music, Mr. Hyde. Right. We are going to have a top 40 nights. My son is into electronic dance music. He does that type of thing. We are also going to be open to doing book anniversary parties and different things like that. In the past, I have run the German American Society and have done thousands of weddings and anniversaries and different things of that nature. We have already booked a few things like that. We also did Toys for Tots in December, so we are planning on doing more responsible things." Councilmember Jerrym. And I do know the new ownership team for the building. Mr. Harding told me about the ownership change recently, and I'm sure as responsible landlords, you'll be keeping the premises well-kept, the outdoor area managed under control, and clean. Mr. Hyde, we are doing some upgrades to that. We want to do upgrades to the cleaning, the areas in the front of the building. After the license was issued, Club Karma has received four tavern reports to this date. They include a tavern report on April 21, 2019, where officers were dispatched to Club Karma to respond to a burglary. Upon arrival, reporting officers were informed by the bar owner that an employee with access to the bar let approximately 15 to 20 people inside the bar after hours. The owner reported that there were several containers of alcohol that were open on the bar after he had gone back in with the officers. The reporting officers also arrested a party who was inside the bar for having a felony warrant. The party was searched, incidented, to arrest, and admitted that he had acid in his possession. On May 20, 2019, officers observed a large crowd blocking traffic on 15th Street spilling out from Club Karma. Reporting officers pulled down the alley and used floodlights, sirens, and verbal commands to inform the crowd to disperse from the street. The crowd continued out from Club Karma, and two different fight disturbances broke out. Reporting officers called for additional cars, to additional cars, as there were at least 250 people blocking the street and sidewalks. There were no staff or security from Club Karma trying to disperse the crowd in front of their business. Reporting officers also stopped two parties that exited. Reporting officers also stopped two parties that exited Club Karma with open containers of alcohol. On August 2, 2019, officers responded to a fight disturbance outside of Club Karma. Multiple people had called 911 to report a fight. Upon arrival, officers observed a large crowd of teenagers and young adults occupying the sidewalk on the east side of South 15th Street in front of the nightclub. Staff stated that one male suspect had removed his shirt and was starting fights with other people amongst the crowd. The crowd was being loud, yelling, shouting, and taunting responding officers. Officers dispersed the crowd and defused a related disturbance on the southwest corner of South 15th Street and Farnham Street. And on August 3, 2019, Omaha Police responded with Omaha Fire and Rescue to South 14th Street and Farnham Street for an assault. Upon arrival, police made contact with two parties suffering from injuries after being beaten with a baseball bat. One of the involved parties was arrested for assault on an officer, firefighter, or healthcare professional and booked into custody of the Douglas County Correctional Facility. According to interviews with multiple witnesses on scene, the involved parties were patrons of Club Karma. According to witness statements, the argument began at Club Karma and continued outside Farnham Street. While on scene investigating the felony assault, officers were required to break up and diffuse additional disturbances involving Club Karma patrons. Mr. Hyde was requested to appear before the City Council Law Committee to discuss these issues on July 16 and August 20. Neither Mr. Hyde nor anyone from Club Karma appeared to address the law committee's concerns on those dates. Copies of the tavern reports, citizen protests, and prior council testimony have been provided to the city clerk, are part of this record and can be used by the council as evidence to determine whether there is cause to believe that the licensee no longer meets the licensing criteria that were in effect at the time the license was issued. The council may also consider testimony today from any citizen protests or others. I will remain in the event that the council has questions after the public hearing is concluded.
Did you have anything to mark as part of the record?
Everything has already been provided to the city clerk and is a part of the record.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents, those in favor of requesting the Liquor Control Commission have this establishment execute a new long form application who wish to be heard? Seeing none, oh, there's one.
Aye.
Don't be shy, come on down.
Thank you. I left work today to participate in my first civil engagement of any kind, civic engagement.
Thank you, welcome.
So thank you, I appreciate it. My name's Matt Loftus, I live just across the street in the apartment building from Karma nightclub. I left work today because the decorative nature of the management of this club and the impact it has on our quality of life. You took the words right out of my mouth, sir, so thank you.
You have to address your remarks to the council.
Music volumes, well in excess of ordinance limits, a constant stream of refuse, littering the block, over serving of intoxicated people who, if you come at 2:00 in the morning, you can see vomiting and urinating on the sidewalk and the alley next to our building, serving of minors, assaults of which you've heard the police responses to. My wife and I were heckled and jeered at by a group standing out front returning from the Jocelyn Gala just a few weeks ago, months ago, excuse me. I don't really begrudge anyone owning a business or having a nightlife or whatever, but this is a huge impact to our quality of life and those of us in the building, some of whom I recognize in this room. So I ask you, please, it's been months and months of this, and engaging the police, lawyers in various businesses, whatever avenues you have to help us, we would really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Come on. If you could get closer to the mic, that way it'll go more efficiently, please.
I'm a little lathered.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Bridget Zimmer, and I am a resident of 306 South 15th Street as well, across from Club Karma. And I've been a resident there for six years. And I too left work today to be sure to be here to represent many of the people in our building. We've never had a problem like this, and we could tell you the 48 hours that this club was turned over with new ownership. I don't know if any of you have walked by the building these days. There are numerous broken windows on the west side and the south side. It's unsafe sidewalks. They line up the people waiting to get in with the orange honeycomb and orange cones. The north side and the west side of the building, the railings are no longer connected to the ground. They are literally at a, you know, 45-degree angle from straight up to the ground with a lot of rust. They have, I don't know if it's fabric shoved in the windows for sound, but that's all they have. So with the open windows, the open doors, the noise level is very loud. All we're asking for is good neighbors. Keep it well-maintained, control the noise level, and have some control over the crowds coming and going. It's very unpleasant these days. First time in six years, I'm considering moving because of this one club and the nature of the people that go in. I'm out quite often in the evening, particularly on Thursday evenings, when it's, I'm assuming it's an under 21 crowd, but they're down, they appear to be the ages of 15 up. Large numbers, they come in their groups of their vehicles throughout the entire evening. Besides being woken up by the gentleman who we're told is an owner or a worker there that has a motorcycle that shoots out flames five feet, and he revs it for a good 10, 15 minutes at about 2:00 a.m. When you do look out, I'm not sure if they have restrooms in that bar because they park all in front of our building and they just open their car doors, drop their pants, and urinate, and do whatever they want to do right along our sidewalk to the entrance of our building. So I hope you consider this greatly, and we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Come on down.
Hi, my name's Claire Jennings. Sorry, I'm a little far away. My name's Claire Jennings, I'm also a resident right in the area. Bridget brought up a good point. I wanted to say that there's a lot of urination going on right outside of our building, which is disgusting. You can go out and smell it now even. The violence and the broken bottles on the ground are a huge concern to me. I have a dog, walk the dog at night, and I have to avoid that area even though I live right there. So it's just, you don't feel safe, and that's disturbing to live in that community. In addition, the noise is absolutely unreasonable. When it really does shake the floor and shake your room when you're trying to sleep, it's unbelievable, so. That was all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Does anyone from the southeast precinct wish to be heard?
Hi, Kathy Gonzalez, southeast precinct, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I also brought Sergeant Maraz, he's in charge of our riverfront unit, so he works down in the area basically every weekend.
Welcome, Captain.
Except for his day off. So just a couple of things to reiterate. You've already mentioned the tavern reports that have been taken. There was one additional one that was on August 9 as well, so there's a total of five tavern reports that we have on file since April of this year. And I just wanted to note that the previous owner with Whiskey Tango, we basically did not have any of these incidents or occurrences in reference to the number of resources as well as the number of violence that have occurred. I did speak with Mr. Hyde in June of this year in an effort to try to limit some of the problems that we were having down there, and ultimately, he had told me that he promised he was going to try to be a good neighbor and was going to have security that was on staff and on site. At that point, he did not know the name of his security company, which was also very concerning to me as well. The other thing I just wanted to mention in regards to what other people had stated was that we had been notified by the mayor's hotline that there were several complaints that were coming through, and so ultimately, we had to give a special attention specifically to that location throughout the summer months and of course, on the weekends when we noticed that there were events that were occurring. Again, it's a ploy on our resources that are in the area. I know Sergeant Maraz has a couple of things that he'd like to state as well, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Captain. Sergeant?
Sergeant Maraz. Sorry. I've been there for many of the disturbances that have occurred. They've been presented to you already, some of the calls that I've been to there, so I'm really open to any questions you might have about anything specifically that I may have seen.
And both of you made the trip to the city council's law committee that Mr. Hyde did not appear at, right?
Correct.
Yep.
So you took time out of your day and they did not show?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Thank you. Are there any opponents? Mr. Hyde, did you want to start?
Paul Hyde, 1419, 1421 Farnham Street. First of all, I will apologize for missing the last meeting. I was in the hospital, I gave Carmen a letter on that, and I do apologize for not being here for the last meeting. I'm very sorry that I wasn't here to address the issues of the neighbors at that time. I would like to start off by saying that we have all the intentions of being good neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We do not want to have a fight with our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We want to have a nice pleasant experience for everyone, for the neighbors, and for the people also coming to the club. A lot of the complaints seem to be coming from across the street at the building directly across from Karma. Most of the complaints are about the noise levels. It seems like a huge problem that we've been speaking about. There have been a lot of broken windows that are in that building that were that way when we took over the building. We did open a few of the rear buildings, the rear windows in the building so that the people would be able to see out because we felt they were all closed in and it was very closed in inside, not knowing that a few of those windows were broken and boarded up. And so with the older windows, they don't seem to close all the way, and some of them are broken, so we have some leakage and noise in the windows. I've spoken to the owners of the building. We've been, we've had a lot going on with them over the last month. Recent pictures will see that they've fixed the sidewalk out front, has been completely redone, it was just redone last week. The railings that they spoke about earlier, two of them were taken down to fix the sidewalk because they had to drive equipment into there. They did replace those railings and they were up as of yesterday when I looked. We've spoken with the management company to have them to fix the windows along with the railing and replace the one portion of the railing that is broken. I've also noticed that they've spoken about the railing in front of Jazz on our complaints and that I've let the property management company know that also. Once we fix, once they do fix the windows and replace the glass, we're going to soundproof the inside of the windows. We plan on putting soundproof insulation in there and boarding up those windows so to keep any sound from getting out into the neighborhood. The windows that face the building, the Baker Building, those are the only windows we have, and those are the ones, so there's about eight of them there. They just came in, the ownership company and the management company, OPPM, has promised me that they have already addressed it and that those windows would be replaced shortly. We do have the insulation already purchased for the inside of the windows, so as soon as they're done, we can insulate the insides, tape them up so that we don't have any sound leaking out. Karma's also gone through a few different promoters that we've worked with, and we've had to change our security team a couple times. I heard mentioned earlier from the officer that when I spoke with her that I didn't know the name of our security company, and I didn't at the time. We inherited the security company from the old ownership. And actually, the old ownership, they still own the parking lot, we don't own or take care of the parking lot, it's a third party that owns and handles the parking lot next to us. We used, he assured me that they had no problems in the past and this and that with the group of security that they had, so we brought them in. We used them up until we realized that their aggressiveness was causing aggressiveness with our crowd. And the more aggressive the security got, the more aggressive it made the crowd get. That being said, we tried a different security company, Protect Omaha. We brought them in, and we tried them on our Thursday nights, which was mentioned earlier because that is a college-themed night. We do check IDs at the door. We are very, very vigilant about that. We've never had any underage drinking. We retain anyone that comes in with a fake ID, and we're, it's something I'm very, very strict about. It's mentioned in a couple of these complaints that they're serving to minors, but there's never, we've never been, had any trouble, we don't have any proof, it's an instantiated claim. We have never served, we don't serve to minors. My bartenders are well-trained, they all take Safe Serve alcohol training to make sure that we are not serving to minors. My bartenders are better, and my door guys are better at checking these IDs and knowing the fake ones than I am. They study the differences of, you know, the other day, a girl came up, I'm standing right at the door, she had Illinois driver's license, handed it to my guy at the door. It took him five seconds to turn her away and send her down the road and keep her ID. And so, once he told her, this is a fake ID, she turned off and took off and started running, and he kept her ID. And I said, how did you know it's a fake ID? And he goes right through, he says, you know, it doesn't have, you know, Illinois is one they're using right now, it doesn't have the proper, it's got a global imprint in it instead of the state imprint, so you know it's fake. And so they're doing a really good job of making sure we don't have any type of underage drinking in our establishment. I mean, that's something that I'm very, very strict about. Okay, the crowd control, I'm going to mention that next, and we talked about our security group. Bringing in the new security has changed things over the past few weeks at Karma immensely. It's changed the whole attitude in the building and with the customers. I witnessed the past security group have a guy that got uppity with them, he was asked to leave, he was still arguing with the security, he got out front, he continued to argue as he was getting in his car, he got aggressive with security. They went to, were going to spray him with mace, which made him twice as aggressive, you know, and so the next week, I said, you know, I don't want that kind of aggressive security here. You know, we want people that are calm and will deescalate situations instead of rising. So the new security came in and they've done a wonderful job. They've made sure, I've watched them deescalate situations, we've had no fights, we've also, we've also thinned out the crowd by raising the price at the door. We noticed, I found the same problem of the large crowds when we got the tavern report and we sat down and had a meeting with ourselves and said, what can we do to change this? We need to change this. We need to be proactive and do something because this isn't going to work. So we decided that, you know, when you're charging $5 a head to get in, you can, you get all different types of crowd, okay? We raised the price a little at the door to get in, and it kind of led us with a little more selective crowd, which just helped match with the security that we have. Now it seems that the upgrade in the security team has helped calm things down and make it to where what we thought we were going to have in the beginning. We were highly disappointed, we actually tried another security team in between the first one and the second one, and they were also a little aggressive too. So I think we've finally found where we need to be with security. We've also, we've also done some upgrades in the building, which I mentioned before. We do still do things as far as anniversaries. We've done Toys for Tots for kids, we raised over $700 for Toys for Tots, we gave over 120 toys, we've done charity drives for local people, we've done drive for a local child with disease, we've done different things without the city, we were part of the Blues Festival. We want to be a good part, a good neighbor in a good part of the city, we want to be a good downtown resident, you know? I do have a plan here in place for each one of the letters that was sent to us. I also have a letter here that I think was forwarded to you from Vanessa Hartzwell. She's the executive director of Nebraska Licensing Beverage Association, and she's gone over this, and she's, if I can read this to you quickly?
Watch, we've all received.
You've all received that, so then?
It'll be a part of the record.
Okay.
If you want to make sure that what you have that's written up is a part of the record, you just hand it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Is there anything else you want to wrap up with before I call other opponents?
The only other thing I would really like to say is that as far as the street traffic, I'd like to just address that for a moment. There was a mention earlier about the motorcycle, the motorcycle that I hate really bad, that the person does not work for me, I don't know who owns that motorcycle. I've asked him multiple times to leave, the police, I had the police ask him to leave. He drives from club to club downtown with a very loud motorcycle that shoots flames out the back. And he goes- And he goes, he parks down in front of, I saw him down there in front of the Hive the other day. The other night, I walked around to check the other clubs and to see what was going on downtown, you know, because of knowing I was coming here this week. And I feel like when I went down there in front, right down the road from me, two blocks down the road where a couple of our competition are, their sidewalks were full of people and the motorcycle that they were talking about was sitting right there revving up, shooting out flames. And I thought, "Oh, okay, well, he's over here causing trouble too." So I felt that, I've seen cars up and down the road. I went to, I went and stood on the corner Monday night when we were closed just to gauge the noise, you know, and I saw multiple gang of motorcycles, 20 to 30 motorcycles coming up Farne Street, you know, very loud. Cars, you know, there's music going on from the corner there. So, I mean, I understand that, you know, we are downtown. We want to be respectful with our noise, but also, as you can see in the letter that was written, that we can't control the noise that's happening at the intersection at 15th and Farne.
Thank you.
And that would probably be all. I thank you.
Okay. Are there any other, excuse me, opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, how you doing? My name is Nick Hyde. My father is Paul Hyde, do a lot of marketing there for the club.
What's your address, Nick?
1421 Farne, 1419 Farne.
Thank you.
I just want to make a point about the adjacent parking lot with a lot of the crowd control, the noises that the neighbors are hearing. We do not own that parking lot. That is owned by someone else and it's a public parking lot that anyone can park in that goes to the orpheum, that go anywhere downtown.
Now, Nick, if I could interrupt you. Are you part of the ownership?
I mean...
You're on the, are you on the liquor license?
No.
Okay, so when you say "we," you're just referring to that as...
That's my dad, so I'm sorry.
But you're not a part of the business?
No, no, I hope, I just...
I just wanted the record to be clear.
Of course, sorry about that.
Okay, so as an opponent, since you're not a part of the business, each speaker, just like the pro-opponents, other than the city's lead, is going to have three minutes?
Okay, yep.
So you can start from there.
Okay, start, okay. And so the parking lot, we don't own the parking lot. Many people go to different places and we have been in conversation with them to try to get that parking lot cleaned up, fixed up, and so that it doesn't fall back onto the club. I also want to make a point that we, as marketing, have reached out to a lot of the neighbors. I have proof in the messages here to try to come up with solutions to try to help to be better neighbors with each one of the, with each one. And I know that a lot of emails might have been sent to you guys today, talk with a lot of people that help and enjoy what we do for the city. We understand and know that all the complaints come exactly from one address. It is the Barker Building and we intend to do everything we can to make sure that the sound and their life of living is much better. But I want to make a point that elsewhere in the city, there is a lot of people that really do enjoy coming and I want to make, and I just want to make it a point that we try to do everything we can to be good neighbors with them.
Thanks, Nick. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Austin Norman.
Address?
Oh, 1021 Casslin, Carle, Iowa.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm an artist here in Omaha. Karma in the past year has allowed me, along with many other artists, regional and national, to come here, display and get recognition. Now, that's just the music end. Now, when it comes to sound, you're looking at buildings that are deteriorated, not under Karma Management, like that's a separate entity, separate other properties that aren't under Karma Management, so that need to be addressed as well. These buildings are deteriorating, as well as the one across the street. Is it insulated? Is it soundproof? I would like to point out that Karma is actually working with building management to try and renovate and get to better code for these issues. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
Jim Vigodi, 8206 South 89th Plaza in La Vista. I just wanted to talk briefly about the, sir, thank you for mentioning the towers. I'm from New York and I have friends there, so I appreciate that. As far as the sound levels go, I'm kind of a nerd and I took sound pressure levels in front of the speakers and across the street. In front of the speakers, depending the three-foot range, one meter range, it was about anywhere from 96 to 100 dB, okay? Which is loud. It's like, analogy would be inside a subway car. Across the street, just by simple calculations, the sound pressure level drops to about 65 decibels, which is normal room conversation practically. In past months, in the beginning, when they had a different sound system in there, it was much louder, particularly when they had windows open. Now, however, the sound pressure levels are much lower across the street. I just wanted to bring that up as well because I know that I've been on the street taking sound level readings and it is considerably less than you might be led to believe by shaking of the walls and such.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing, are there anyone else? Raise your hand if you're going to be wished to be heard. Okay.
Jeff Ram, 2924 South 117th Street. I am a local promoter since 2004 in Omaha, Nebraska. I've worked with Karma with a handful of events in the past year and have more coming up. Just wanted to state that as far as security goes, they have adequately covered our needs and have successfully thrown shows without incident as far as my shows are concerned. And just wanted to point out some good they're doing also. We do have a charity event coming up there that is affiliated with Scaries for Cares, which benefits cancer and burn victims, children especially. You know, real passionate about music. They are doing a lot of good and that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls, chairman of the Liquor Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul, could I have you come to the mic? Now, how many times have we, did we invite you to be in front of the law committee?
This was, today's the third.
Okay, this is the third.
I didn't receive the first one. It was mailed to the office and we don't have a key to the mailbox. I apologize.
Okay, okay.
Carmen let me know afterwards and I let her, I changed our address with her so that it would get mailed to my house.
I appreciate it. Hopefully that's not going to need it in the future. I have a couple of questions. You're depending an awful lot on the security company for some of your answers. How long have you had this, the present security company as compared to the police reports? That is, have you had this new company like for three weeks, two months?
I was going to say three weeks. Three weeks, is that about right? Three weeks to a month.
And you have not received any police reports since then?
Not since we've had them, we haven't.
So you're saying the security company is the game changer for you?
It has been for us so far. It's changed the whole attitude and I'm out front every night when people are leaving and I watch, I make sure. In fact, there was a statement before on our one tavern report that said that two people left with alcohol and I thought that when we went down to Lincoln and they dropped that charge because there was nobody, I mean, there was no proof anyone, I watch the people walking. I don't even let them even walk out with a glass of water, you know?
Okay. You said that you had an awful lot of problems with $5 and then you increased that and that sort of cleaned up, I would say, maybe at the crowd. What did you increase that to?
It depends on the night. Normally, it's going to be either $15 or $20.
So if I would go down there and it cost me $20 on an exceptional night to get in, $15 on...
Yeah, on a Saturday night, it's probably $20.
$20 and $15 on the other nights?
Probably on Friday, $15, excuse me, Friday would be $10 or $15.
And throughout the week, the same?
Yes.
I can see where that would help. Another question I have is, it appears that there are a number of large groups that surround your building after hours. Is that a factor that just...
Well, that was, before we changed our promotion deals back, we went in with a promotion company that we did a few Saturdays with and they're a local Omaha group. Down North Entertainment, they brought some model, they paid a model to come and do an appearance at our place and then, you know, they advertised that this model's going to be at our place and so a lot of people came. He does parties where he's going to pay someone to come and then presses to try and get a lot of people there to make up his money. We've gotten away from that. We're no longer doing that because that's what creates those, we have to have this large crowd to make our money back.
Okay, so you've changed the promoter?
Mm-hmm.
And that has improved the situation?
Yes, because we're not doing these huge crowds that are all showing up at midnight at 12:30.
Anybody who would know in the music business? Anybody who would know in the music business, noise is going to occur when you have apparently music that you have. Now you're going to rectify that by soundproofing the windows?
Yes.
I'm surprised as a person in the business that you didn't do that initially.
We've been trying to, we've been waiting to, I've been going back and forth with the building owners over getting the windows fixed since the day we went in because they don't shut completely the right way. And with them not being shut, you know, I don't want it to board up and insulate them with the windows not shut. You know, it's just, I keep getting told that they're going to replace the windows and then finally they came to us and I actually asked them to be here today. They're not here, but they did promise me.
Okay, when do you anticipate that these windows are going to be fixed?
This month is what they've told me. They'll be done this month. They said they've ordered, they've ordered some type of the windows. They had a guy up there measuring them last week and looking at them, measuring them, and they knew I was coming here today for this.
Okay. Apparently, they must not have been that concerned if they didn't back you up.
Must not.
So it makes me a little bit...
Makes me a little upset too.
Well, also, is it just talk? Not from you, but from them?
They did show up and did do the sidewalk, which I was very happy about, you know, and we had holes all the way through the sidewalk that were going into the...
Have they measured the windows?
Yes.
They've done all that?
They sent a guy, a guy came out and measured everything and came out and looked.
Okay. Now, also, it seems like this is very upsetting to the individuals who live down there is that looks like the bathroom is outside the building.
We have two bathrooms and we have one in the hallway as people are leaving, you know, because we're up on the second floor.
Right.
So they leave on the stairs. We have a men's, we have a ladies' room at the top of the stair. We have restrooms inside the facility and then as they're leaving, we have a restroom, a ladies' in the stairwell and a men's in the stairwell. So there's actually restrooms in the stairwell.
I know, I understand that.
As they're leaving.
You'd have to have that for your liquor license, but apparently the outside is becoming another bathroom. If I'm listening to some of the people who came up...
I heard them too. I have not witnessed it. I heard them and I'm concerned for that too as well. It's not something that I would want to ignore. It's something that I think I can address with my security. I think my, I mean, I don't know how, I feel that we can, I mean, I don't know what our limits are about, you know, going across the street or going, you know, around the block, around the corner there and addressing people, you know what I mean? Another thing, as my son mentioned, and I've seen this happen more often than not, I mean, we had cars come up and parked right in front of our building and they put money in the meter and they walked right around the corner and went down the road to the next bar. Just because, and he mentioned that, that we have the parking lot next to us. Probably maybe half of the cars that are in there come into our establishment and maybe the other half are going other places. And the parking lot is mainly used for the orpheum. The owners of it mainly sell spots to go to the orpheum, which is catty corner to that parking lot.
I would assume most of those people probably would not relieve themselves right outside.
Right, I would agree.
So it has to be coming from your establishment or another one around in that area. I'm just going to read this into record. We did send you and requested that you would come in front of the law committee on Tuesday, July 16th at 9:30. And I understand you said you were in the hospital also on Tuesday, August 20th. So we did send two letters to you. I understand you're in the hospital and the other one that it was sent to another address, apparently. Is that what you're telling me?
Actually, council member, so the record's correct, it was emailed as indicated on the...
Email, right, it is emailed.
So it was not just mailed?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding.
You're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Paul's addressed some of the issues, but I guess, Mr. Hyde, I'll start out by asking. So of all the people who testified here today in favor of the long form and those who sent in other complaints, are you, are you denying that any of those events happened or that their complaints aren't valid?
I'm not denying that any of the events happened. I do not feel that all the complaints are valid, but I do, I do want to say, like I stated in the very beginning, my intentions with them is to be a good neighbor. And I'd like to, you know, I'd like to address their complaints with them if they, you know, I'd like to fix their complaints. I don't want to be...
What have you done to fix those complaints or address those complaints?
Well, the first thing we've done, we've started cleaning out the front of the building.
When did that occur?
Well, I've been fighting to do it for months.
I'm sorry, you...
I've been fighting with the ownership to have it done for months. They, two weeks ago, they started in with the concrete in the front and redid the sidewalks in the front. The sidewalk was really in bad condition and they brought in a company, they tore up the sidewalk, they totally redone the sidewalk.
Okay.
So that's all done. Next is the railing in the front of our establishment. They repaired what was there, but they're going to replace, there's one section that's missing and they're going to replace that section.
So you keep talking about the windows too. I'm assuming you probably have a pretty standard commercial lease with the ownership group. Windows typically would be your responsibility, not the building ownership. Is that different here?
Yes, it is. In our lease, it says that anything that brings the building up to code that the ownership is responsible for.
But once those are to code, then it's their, your responsibility?
Yes.
And so you're saying that the windows are not to code? Being a broken window is not, I mean, that's, a broken window typically in a commercial lease is going to be the tenant's responsibility. A broken window, unless, I'll ask Mr. Fanzler, the planning director, is a broken window, I mean, the window itself is to code?
Yeah, Dave Fanzler, City Planning.
It's the condition of the windows themselves. It's not one individual broken windows. It's the condition of the windows and that they don't close properly.
Do you have a copy of the lease? I'd like to see that.
I do not have one.
It's on its way.
Okay.
And also, Councilmember Harding, as a part of the issuance of the liquor permit, the city's code enforcement team has to inspect the premises to make sure it passes all applicable code and the fire department has to also inspect to make sure it passes the life safety code.
In order to get a certificate of occupancy, that's part of my...
So there weren't a code violation?
Yeah, so that's my point, I was trying to make that point, that there probably aren't any code violations and then therefore the windows would be a responsibility typically in a commercial lease, but I'll wait and see what the lease says to, before I pass judgment on that. I just, you know, we've now covered the issue of the, seems like the key to the mailbox shouldn't have been an issue if you were getting these by email address. Do you have, what's your current, what's your email address?
I have a couple of them, but I probably Paul Hyde, phyde5150@gmail.com.
Okay, which is where these were sent too. Okay. So it would seem that you would have received those then?
They were probably on email. I did not see them. I apologize. I did not see them.
Okay. I won't go into the contract or I think that's been hashed over enough. Tell me too, when I was reading back through the original application of the liquor license, it said it was a music venue and things like that, but then I heard you a few minutes ago talking about one of the promoters that you used. You bring in a model. Was there any music associated with that?
Oh, yes, yeah, it's a model and a DJ. It's, there's a DJ.
Tell me a little bit about that, I guess.
Well, they bring in, they bring in, say, an Instagram model or something, one of these, and they will, you know, they will have a meet and greet with this person. So they'll advertise that if you would like to come meet and greet this star, you can come and buy tickets and they'll have a meet and greet with this... come and buy tickets and they'll have a meet and greet with this Instagram star. In the meantime, it's still, it's still gonna be a music evening. I mean, we're still have music playing the whole evening. Normally, the star sits up in the VIP section and then the people at the meet and greets will be able to come up and they get introduced and they get to talk to this person for a minute and maybe get an autograph and then go about their way.
Okay. All right, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. I'm a little concerned, you just said you just started cleaning up. And I mean, the complaints from the people, not just that testified today, but the complaints that we received, I mean, they, every single one of them complaint, complains of litter, cigarette butts, but many other things outside the establishment. So, I mean, but you just decided right before you're coming in front of the city council to start cleaning up the outside?
No, ma'am.
So what kind of, what is, what's the cleanup routine for, for the bar?
For the outside area?
Right.
I mean, so we have a normal cleaning crew that comes in every, every day after that we're open, the day after we're open. And they're responsible for also cleaning the front sidewalk, sweeping our smoking section. We have a smoking area out front that's gated in. They're responsible for sweeping that section, they take out all the trash. We, I don't have them do anything with the parking lot because it's not our parking lot. You know, I mean, if we see anything that's big, bottles, big bags, anything that, we'll pick it up and throw it in the dumpster. But they've been, I mean, we've been, we didn't just decide to start cleaning up. I mean, as far as the building goes and like the outside and with the sidewalk and the railing, I've been working with that with the ownership since we've taken over. You know, this is, that's been kind of a long ongoing thing. And I think the ownership, when they recently bought the building back in October and didn't realize all the problems with the building and we didn't have air conditioning in part of our bar and the one downstairs bar. And I think that they had to do so many other things at first that they didn't get to some of the cosmetic things as quick as we wanted them to.
Well, I'm talking literally about the garbage. And I just wanna, I just wanna note that every, every single response that you've given, you know, and you may not have realized this, but you've deflected and blamed somebody else and not taken responsibility. So the various security people that you've had, it was all their fault. They were the aggressors. They were causing the crowds. So you have cleaning people, so clearly they're not cleaning up or maybe not doing, because there are multiple neighbors see garbage around your place. And you understand that if you have patrons that are leaving your bar and they may be going into the parking lot next door, but they're smashing bottles and throwing garbage, then you probably should have your cleaning people go clean that up because it's a result of your patrons who are paying now five to $20, I guess, to get it. When did you start the increase?
We started the increase about three weeks ago as we changed security.
And have you done it every night?
Yes.
And then there were, there were also issues with, I mean, over 250 people outside with no security was one of the tavern reports.
Yeah, I was outside that night and there was security outside that night. We had 16 security guards on staff that night.
And you're saying that our Omaha police officer didn't notice?
Well, maybe they didn't see them, maybe there were some, maybe only one or two out front with the large crowd. I was out front that whole night. And because they said nobody was, and I rebutted that when I went down to Lincoln because I was literally on that front sidewalk all night and, you know, trying my best to help disperse the people off the sidewalk, you know.
But you had 16 security guards and they weren't able to help? I would think if you had 16, then that wouldn't have been a problem.
We had 16 and it was a problem that that was the old security team. And I don't wanna blame them, but I don't think it would be a problem now.
Okay. And then just recently, we had, there were multiple fights outside and on at least two of the tavern reports, there were patrons that were taunting Omaha police and even, I think maybe even assaulting one of the officers. So how are you working with Omaha Police Department? What have you done to work with them or, or kind of alleviate some of their concerns?
Well, I've spoken with the sergeant a couple of times down there about what we're trying to do. I've let him know the type of thing, the type of change we're trying to make with our crowd. I saw that when we had the larger crowd and I saw, you know, people, they were trying to get attention, they were like, they knew people were filming, so they were like trying to do stuff when there were people taking cameras, you know, in front of the police. And that's when it was a larger crowd and that's the night that I decided that we could never have that type of crowd again. And that's when we decided we were changing our price and changing our security, is the night that that, that happened.
Okay. And I, I just, I kinda wanna call attention, both you and your son, say "we," I think your son Nick.
Mm-hmm.
Is he the one really running the place? Is he the one managing the bar when you're not there?
No, I'm always there. We have a group of people there. We have a group of employees. I mean, he is my right hand, yeah. But I am the one responsible and I'm the one there and I do run it.
And does anybody else ride, because multiple people listed a motorcycle, do any of your employees ride the motorcycle?
No one I have rides a motorcycle, no.
And you understand what, what's at issue today is that we're just asking for you to do, we're asking for you to do a long form. And you really might not have been here today had you shown up for one of the two opportunities to appear in front of our law committee.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Council Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just more of a comment, because we are hearing a lot of back and forth of what was done, what should have been done, what could be done. For me, I mean, obviously, we all know this location, we've driven by it, it's on a main corridor. It's in the urban core and I don't have to tell you what you have very close to you going in, which is hundreds of million dollars of investment for our city, which is in turn gonna bring tourism in. And we know tourism is vital. So if it's one of those places that interferes with that, for me, that's where it becomes a problem because we're all for the business owner. I mean, there's a way to get this taken care of, whether it was meetings you missed or windows you fixed or whatever it is. And certainly, we all are worried about the quality of our residents because that's what we're here to do in each aspect of the decisions we make. But there's one part of this, being on the law committee as well, is, that bothers me, is the law enforcement that are involved because we already know the resources are spread as thin as they can possibly be at times downtown. So if each and every weekend or party or an event, they are timing and grouping their police officers to a place waiting for something they know that's gonna happen, that's the problem for me. Because that's not their job. They're not your personal security force. So for me, with their resources being spread thin with OBD at times and the problems going on here, it's something that needs to be fixed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't wanna do this dance any longer. I wanna make a motion to support the long form application.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Pauls, Chairman of the Liquor Committee.
I just have one question because I am, as you can tell, a little concerned because you missed a couple of meetings and you're telling me legitimately. Also concerned, have you been in contact with our finance department?
I have not.
Do you think it's a possibility they may have sent you some emails also?
It's possible.
Well, I would check your emails.
I'd double-check it.
I will, if I were you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, or Mr. Gray, I just wanted to clarify one thing. I've got a copy of the lease, I've kinda quickly gone through it, and I'll just say for the record.
We're just doing the dance here, right?
I know. It is. Tenant's taking possession of the premises or any portion is conclusive evidence against tenant that the portion of the premises taken possession of is in good order and satisfactory condition. Landlord shall have no obligation to improve, repair, restore, or refurbish the premises or any other items therein except as otherwise specifically provided by this lease. So I think that backs up the point I was trying to make and it's, I think it's wonderful that, that's why we make sure leases are included in liquor license applications, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say a couple of things since it's in my district and I'm on the liquor committee. And recognizing first, my constituents that took the time and effort to be here today, the police that did, even the people who came in support of the establishment, including you, that I think, as I recall what Mr. Wiesen said from the city law department, is the number one most important aspect to the liquor license is our determination and assessment of the character and fitness of the applicant. And I think you got caught in at least four different fibs today. And the more you talked, the more you did yourself in. First, it was the letter. That letter was mailed to me. I didn't get that memo letter because that was an old address. But that address that we use to serve, A, wasn't the only means, as we've learned, it was email. But it's the address the applicant gave to the liquor commission and to the city to use to serve him with correspondence and communications. So we know we got that one. And we know he didn't appear. And we knew at the committee in July that that was the fact. And he didn't respond. So we had the second hearing, in which case he said he was, had a medical condition. So I asked to see a doctor's note. Because obviously, I didn't believe him from the last month, so it's in the spirit of Ronald Reagan, trust but verify. And it may be that you've provided the doctor's note, but I haven't seen one.
I did.
Then we hear about, it's all the landlord's fault. And we know from the lease, you didn't know, but Mr. Harding has a special expertise in real estate because he works in that as his profession. So he knew right where to zero in and what he thought was the standard lease that he deals with as a part of his business in helping people find and lease spaces for both owners and people looking. You were dishonest there. The responsibility for maintaining this premises, since you took over, was yours and yours alone. You may have some conversations with a landlord who may be interested in helping you out, but the buck stops with you. And I could go on and on and repeat some of the things that my colleagues have exposed here, but I, as you said, Councilmember Gray, in your wisdom, your journalistic instincts kicked in, this is just a dance. So there's a motion, there's a second roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council, rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 27 through 35 were held on August 27, 2019.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 36 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding any of these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent, and of course, anything you'd like to add in the time allotted.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'd like to address number 47. And if I'm correct, also number 50.
You may proceed.
I'm opposed to number 47. I don't know why we ought to be spending more than a quarter of a million dollars, is it?
Larry, there'll be a separate public hearing on item 50, so just talk about 47 and then when you're finished with that, we'll call 50 as a separate.
Your rule isn't clear on that, thank you. Spending that much money out of my bill fold to send representatives around meeting with other cities and not explain why? Are we telling them what to do or are they telling us what to do? You know, we, we elected local people, we didn't elect people from around the country. So I'm opposed to 47 for that reason.
Thank you. We'll get to 50 in just a second.
I'd like to stay in the house, but I don't know if I can afford the property taxes anymore. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard on the consent agenda resolutions? Public hearing is closed. Second roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 50, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for John G. Gomez versus Philip Hodges and the City of Omaha in the amount of $90,000.
The public hearing on item 50 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Mr. Store, you wanted to testify on item 50 as an opponent, right? Come on down.
Do I need to repeat? Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132.
Thank you.
I'd like some explanation in the public about why $90,000 of our money has to go to pay somebody off?
Okay.
That's part of our taxes, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. I would just comment that this was a lawsuit filed by a pedestrian against the City of Omaha as a result of an accident in a crosswalk in South Omaha where Mr. Gomez alleged that the fault of the driver of the vehicle, driving a city vehicle was negligent in the operation of that vehicle. It's the recommendation of the law department, considering all the facts and circumstances of the case, that we approve the settlement.
With that, I can turn to the law department and I'll second that.
Thank you. Was there a motion and a second? Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 50 is approved, seven to zero. Item 51, an ordinance to approve an agreement with CHI Health to provide for an employee assistance program for a period of three years from June 1, 2019 through May 31, 2022.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
No, no carry.
It's just a vote. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Festerson. Councilmember Festerson passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 51 is approved, six to zero. Item 52, an ordinance vacating the portion of the east west alley between North Saddle Creek Road and North 44th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 52 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 49-824, to update the specifications for manholes.
Public hearing on item 53 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve a memorandum of understanding with Omaha Police Managers Association and Omaha Police Officers Association to establish a fitness and wellness program for sworn staff in Omaha, or Omaha Police Department.
The public hearing on item 54 begins at this time. Before we open up to the public, we have Mr. Endumpash from the city law department who'd like to give some background in this.
Bernard Endumpash, Deputy Attorney, attorney, thank you. I just wanted to, I know there was a question or two this morning, I wanted to come to the podium. This particular MOU is indicated originated from a wellness community, committee at the police department, which ultimately led to a negotiation occurring between the city, the Police Officers Association, the Police Management Association for the wellness program that's part of this MOU. It's been to the personnel board, it comes to you. It, because it changes the terms and conditions of employment, it was my opinion that it was an amendment of the labor agreement. As a result, it needed your approval in order to go into As a result, it needed your approval in order to go into effect. So that's what it is, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on item 54 to any proponents.
Good afternoon. I'm Tony Connor, President of the Omaha Police Officers Association. My address is 13445 Crier Avenue. I just say good afternoon to everybody here. Being a police officer is the most dangerous job in this country. In recent national events, I've made the job even more challenging. As of today, there has been 142 suicides in law enforcement nationwide. Suicide deaths are outpacing line-of-duty deaths in law enforcement right now. We in Omaha have been lucky. We've been lucky we haven't had an officer to commit suicide, but as we all know, luck eventually runs out. The stressful nature of police work will negatively impact officers' mental health. One of the stressors are the exact reasons that officers stay alive is the persistent hypervigilant, along with other stressors. But just to stay alive as a police officer, you have to be hypervigilant on the street. Police departments across the country are investing more in their officers with wellness and fitness programs. This program is a start, and the benefits the city will receive from this program will far outpace any cost of this program. Studies have shown when police officers are well-rested, in peak physical shape, and are mentally healthy, they are less expensive to insure, they make better decisions at work, they, there's actually an increase in community and police relations resulting in fewer complaints on police officers. This program is a real win-win for the city and its officers. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank Chief Schmoder. He was here earlier because of the earlier discussion. He had to leave early, but he did say he's going to send a letter of support to every one of you guys, and he also wanted to thank the mayor for her support in this. But this project was vital to both the chief and I when I first took over as President of the association, and we were able to work together to get this accomplished. It's nice for me, and it's unique to some other places across the country to have a chief and management willing to work with us to try to solve problems and try to solve solutions. So that's been, I've been lucky to have that with, in Chief Schmoder. Also, I would like to thank publicly the Wellness and Fitness Committee. The association appointed three people, and then the management appointed three people. The three people that I appointed were Sergeant Owen Gregg, Officer John Edwards, and Officer Jamie Baggett. And the chief appointees were, who are also OPA members, were Sergeant Stacy Williams, Sergeant Steve Foranoff, and Sergeant Kevin Elliott. These are truly the men and women behind that did really all the work. We were up here talking about it, but they did all the work, and they deserve all the credit for everything that was done. I'm here to answer any questions if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a few lights. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Endemposh, for that explanation. I just flagged this item this morning. It is a bit of an unusual process item for us outside of the normally managed agreement with the association that is handled in bargaining situations, but I fully understand the intent of this and am supportive of it. And I'm glad Mr. Connor, he gave us that background, which is, you know, consistent with my opening remarks today. It's a tough job in a high-pressure situation, and I read an article recently about the New York City Police Department, which is, you know, the largest police department in the country. But I think I'm accurate in saying the article said that there's a suicide, one per week on that police force in the city. So it's reached crisis level in that city, I know, and is of huge concern. So anything we can do to prevent that from happening here and assist our officers in the tough job they have is something I'll support, and I'll do that next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions for President Connor.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
I wanted to thank you for being here. You're always willing to show up, take the questions, so I appreciate that. So reading through this, the program explained this to me so I'm clear, and I appreciate that committee that brought this forward. Obviously, the job that each and every officer does is very strenuous on every aspect of their job. So the voluntary program, would there be any, say, if somebody didn't sign up to do this, would there be any, anything held against them if they didn't?
No, the program is totally voluntary. So if an officer decides they don't want to do the fitness test, they can choose not to do the fitness test. That's totally up to them.
Okay. And then a question I always ask, and I'm not sure from the committee of how this went to the association members, but did your members take a vote?
Our members did vote to approve this, this MOU, the same MOU you have in front of you. Yes.
So they voted to approve it?
Yes, they did.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It was unanimous.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Tony, I would have you do 14 or 15 push-ups. Can you? Not today, after.
It's a voluntary program.
It is, it is going to get us volunteer. I truly think this is a great idea. I'm just curious, since this is outside the contract.
Yes.
We're sort of amending it, is that what you say?
Basically, that's what it effectively is because this, these gives the people that are in the program and that test at certain levels additional time off. And because that's a term of work, it's something that has to be negotiated, and it has to be something that is approved ultimately by the council and as an amendment. When this came out of the Wellness Committee and went to the chief, and the chief spoke with Mr. McQueen, and they kind of negotiated the agreement, I had some discussion with them and indicated that because we wanted to get it implemented as soon as possible, it was in fact an amendment to the agreement, and we needed to come here. I think this happened, it's happened on occasion. It doesn't happen very often where we kind of go in and just take care of one thing in the middle of a contract, but...
Yeah, and I will agree that the, those police officers are, they are under a different type of stress than the typical person who works for the city. Can this also, a program similar to this, could it not be, not this program, but provided to the civilians?
Absolutely.
Or do we already have one?
Well, so the labor agreements that we have with civilian groups give us some ability to create a wellness program, but we do not have, currently have, an existing wellness program with civilians. We've had, six or seven years ago, we spent three or four years involved in one, encouraged some blood testing, we had people come on-site and do some of those things, but we haven't negotiated a formal one where, and I think there's always been some difficulty in trying to figure out what, what kind of use, things you use as rewards for people that participate. But absolutely, it's something that can be used, and I would encourage, because the council has some input with the negotiators when they come in. The Local 251 contract ends at the end of 2020, so you have some input to be able to say, hey, one of the things that we might be interested in seeing in the next civilian contract is some type of wellness program. And let the mayor know that because obviously she's the one that negotiates, and Mr. McQueen, and there's no reason that we couldn't negotiate something for any and all civilians.
Okay. Well, thank you, because I think, I'm assuming the mayor may be listening or watching. It seems like it has value for not only the police officers, but for, I mean, the more of us who are healthy, the, I think research will show the less time we need for a doctor.
I think it's, it's easy to say, I don't know anybody who's opposed to having a wellness program.
It's just seeing how the, can be rewarded.
It's a matter of making, figuring out how you make it work, what kind of participation you get, what kind of incentives you get for people being, participating, what, what are people willing to do, and what are people not willing to do, and what are we willing to spend to have that program.
Okay, so sending a message.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Endemposh, I have some questions, and I would say at the outset before I ask my questions, that this does seem like a very laudable thing that the city and the Police Officers Association has agreed to do, and we want to make sure we didn't skip any steps in our, in being over-exuberant of this, the parties to get this before the council. I don't remember the council being updated, that there were any collective bargaining agreement negotiations to amend this agreement coming before us. I don't remember if there was any Personnel Board or any would have been required for this to go through. I don't remember coming to the Law Committee before today as the primary means of vetting the collective bargain agreement changes. And I don't remember the Human Resources Committee having any briefings either, so...
I can address what I can address. So I was not involved in negotiating it. It's something that came to Mr. McQueen and Mr. Young when they were negotiating from the police chief. So I'm not, I don't have any familiarity with what you were advised or not advised at any of those meetings. I know I was given some, an opportunity to provide some input on the document itself and whether it was comprehensive. I did opine, when I first saw it, that I thought it needed, that it was an amendment to the contract, and it needed to be approved by the council, and also needed to go to the Personnel Board for approval, and it did go to the Personnel Board at the last hearing and was approved. That's generally where I'm, my involvement in the negotiations process, and I'm not trying to, like, I don't really, I don't know...
But I think one reason why there were so many questions this morning, just so for people who are observing that, would be at the pre-council meeting where we meet, going over the agenda.
I will reiterate.
Because this was kind of a surprise to the council, at least it was to me, can't speak for anyone else. Even as, as good as the program is, so I would ask you this, are there any efforts underway to do similar amendments to the other collective bargaining agreements? Because I hear this one, I think of Councilmember Festerson's remarks about 9/11 and first responders, so I naturally think about the firefighters and their firefighter management. Battalion chiefs are out there on the front lines, and the pressure, the stress, what they see every day, particularly as they respond to horrific traumatic auto accidents involving all sorts of things. And are there any other efforts going on?
I'm not aware of any other efforts to do a wellness program. I can tell you that I'm aware generally that we are in the process of negotiating with both Local 385 and the Fire Management Association because both their labor agreements ended at the beginning of 2019. So not, both those groups are without a labor agreement, and I know Mr. McQueen is involved in negotiating with those groups. I will...
So what, what does the, is it the charter or the code that says when there are collective bargaining negotiations going on, the council is to be updated within so many days? What is that code provision saying?
There's a code provision that was adopted roughly 10, 11, 12 years ago that imposed some timelines for notifying the council, and I know I've had some discussions with Mr. Dowding about maybe tweaking some of those things, but that has not occurred. There isn't anything in the charter. The charter and the code do require that any changes to personnel rules go to the Personnel Board for consideration before they can come to this council.
Well, I would hope that this is an anomaly that perhaps occurred because of the over-exuberance of the parties to get this very worthwhile program up and going, but in the future, and I want to thank you for catching the fact that this was an amendment to the collective bargain agreement and then bringing it to the proper Personnel Board and to the council. But in the future, I'd like to ask, as the council president, that my colleagues on the council and I be notified when there are collective bargaining negotiations going on, even amendments, that the ordinance that requires that we be updated be respected.
I'll pass that along.
And that will help probably in the future.
And I, and I'll pass it along, and I know that there haven't been as many briefings of the council recently as there was in the past, and I'm not sure if that's the, whose choice that is, but really, there is certainly a process we need to follow, and I'll make sure I remind, kind of make sure everybody's aware of that section.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the City of Papillion and the City of Bellevue to utilize the fire station alerting infrastructure for a term of 10 years, with each city paying $6,000 per year for the term of the agreement.
The public hearing on item 55 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 56, Ty's Outdoor Power appeals rejection of their bid from August 14, 2019, for the City of Omaha, 72-inch self-propelled mower.
Madam Clerk, before we open this up for public hearing, I have two things I want to do. First, I'd like to ask you procedurally, when I get to calling proponents and opponents, who would be considered a proponent and who would be the opponent?
Well, this isn't a public hearing. I think you're just calling up the parties.
So just council members would call up?
Correct.
All right.
Probably I'd call up the applicant, or the... I'll defer to Paul.
City Law.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Yes, you would call up the individual, the company making the appeal, and then you could have a rebuttal or response from the department.
Okay.
That's how we had normally done it.
Thank you, Mr. Kratz. All right, at this time, we'll call up the appellant, Ty's Outdoor Power, and state the basis of your appeal. Is there anyone here for Ty's Outdoor Power? Seeing none, I'll open it up to council members with questions or a motion. No further lights, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 57 through 88, do not require public hearing or City Council in consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:45.